Good evening. I'm gonna go ahead and call to order the regular council meeting for the Jackson City Council. Today's date is October 21st and the time is approximately 6:00 PM. Colleagues, are there any opening comments?
Yes, sir. Mr. Harley?
Yes, I'd just like to ask the council and the members here to just say, I want to acknowledge the passing of Mr. John Graves in our community. I'm sure the mayor and others can say a lot more about him than I know, but I do know he's a member of one of the churches in our ward and outstanding, a long-term preacher, a long-term community builder. Thank you.
I think you mean Reverend James Graves.
I was gonna say it's Judge Graves, Dad, okay.
So did you want to add anything to that, sir?
I'd just say that Reverend Graves is one of the ministers who probably is most the most frequent presenters of the invocation at the state senate. He was a man who was a mentor of mine, was a great man of God, and loved his family, and he will be sorely missed.
Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Pitt?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to recognize several very successful entrepreneurs that are here with us today in this chambers. We've got Mr. Lee Bush over here, who's been a longtime businessman in Jackson. We've got Austin Evans, who's one of the co-founders of Cathead Distillery.
Welcome.
And Mr. John Evans, the founder of Lemuria.
Welcome. Anyone else? All right. Well, colleagues, we're gonna go ahead and begin with the invocation, which will be given by the Reverend Dr. Stanley Smith of Crossroads Missionary Baptist Church, representing Ward Seven, and then I'll invite Councilman Harley to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Good evening. Let's bow heads. Eternal God, our Father, we come right now, thanking you, Lord, for all you've done and all that you're going to do. We ask now, Lord God, as this council meets Lord God, that you would just bless them in a mighty and powerful way, that you would help them to understand, Lord God, only what we do for you will last. Help us, Lord God, lean not to our own understanding, but in all our ways acknowledge you. We thank you, Lord God, once again, for all that you've done and all that you do. Lord, you're the greatest of all time, Lord God. You're undefeated, and Lord, if we would just follow your ways, walk in your footsteps, Lord God, we too would be great, Lord God, not in our own selves, but in what we do for you, because the reality is that only what we do for you will last. Lord, we thank you right now, we honor you not with our lips, but with our whole hearts. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much for the invocation, Pastor Smith, and it's great to see you again, Lady Stephanie Smith. All right, colleagues, we're gonna go ahead with public comment. We have on schedule four non-agenda items. If you're here to give public comment, as I call your name, please come to the podium. Make sure you state your name for the record. You have three minutes for public comment, okay? When you get to the two-and-a-half-minute mark, the clerk will signal to you that you have 30 seconds left. Once those 30 seconds up, all your three minutes are up, and she will then give you the red stop sign. At that point, we nicely ask you to cease your public comment, okay? And so we will start with Ms. Naomi Ford, Jackson Police Department, unfair treatment. Good evening.
Good evening.
Speak to the mic, please.
Thank you all for having me.
You can move it.
Can you hear me?
No, just adjust the mic for you.
Okay.
There you go.
That's better?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you all for having me. Today I've come before you all, not as a law enforcement officer, a former JPD officer, but as a parent, because my son Willie McLaurin is still with Jackson Police Department, and I'm concerned for his well-being, because he's being harassed and mistreated within a department. I have been trying to reach out, and Mayor, it's before your time, and I've been trying to reach out to everyone. I have video of him still being harassed under Commander McNeil, Fosson McNeil, also William Kendrick, and that's why I come before you, because I'm asking, pleading, as a parent, for the harassment to stop. One of your things, you speak on accountability, and as you all look for a new chief, being a former JPD officer, I ask for like the core values of accountability, fairness, honesty, within the person that you all choose, because this thing that they have as a clique within a department, it has to end, because being in law enforcement, it's already stressful enough, and then to be under personnel that make it more stressful just because of a person lifestyle, because at first it was because of my son's hair, so we had to get his haircut, and it just goes on and on after that. So that's why I come before you all. Three minutes isn't enough. I have documentation. Again, like I say, I have video, and I'm not gonna keep you all, but the harassment within the police department, and it's not everyone. It's certain people. It has to stop, because I don't want to go and put flowers on my son's grave. I just want the harassment to stop. That's all I have.
Thank you. Next, we have Shantae Wallace, family issues.
How are you doing today? My name is Shantae Wallace, and we have the same issue, the lady, the young lady that's standing up here with the police department as well. This is dealing with my son, and he is nine years old, and he's been sex trafficked, and the police department is 100% involved in it. I've been an officer for 18 years, and they prey on the elderly, because my mom and auntie are 81 and up, and so they preyed on that, and they used it like my son got into some trouble at that age, but they did, they started it when he was eight years old, a baby. At the age of eight years old, I had several officers calling me, keeping up with his age, and he is being sex trafficked. They did a fake adoption. If I tried to call and get a welfare check on my child, I cannot get it. I am threatened by Commander Fosson and Commander Thompson. If I called the police for anything, I will be arrested, and I am a police officer. So I have reached out to the mayor, Horn, about this matter, and I also had a meet with Parkinson, and it was a very good meet. I appreciate you meeting with me. It means a lot to me, because no one, I've been reaching out to everybody, no one has took the time to have a meeting with me, and they're not concerned about the kids. If my child has been molested by police officers and family members, because my family are criminals, and they know that, and if my son is being sex trafficked, it's other kids out there, they doing the same thing to other police officers. I just wanna make everybody aware, and I am going to call every city councilman and request a meeting with you all as well, and I don't wanna hold you long, but I am pursuing these charges with my child and taking advantage of my mom. They knew my mom was 81 years old. I mean, my whole family is elderly, like I said, 81 and up, and we have a court date. The court date is October the 27th, so we're gonna see how that goes with, I guess it is with Judge Hicks, but I don't wanna keep you long. I'll keep you informed, because I will be at every meet. Y'all have a blessed day. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wallace. Jeanette Alexander, Jackson Water Billing Issues. Jeanette Alexander. Okay. Mark Terry. Mark Terry. Did I pronounce that right?
Yes, and I am not him, though. I am his partner. So it's Mark Theory, but I am Dr., yes, Theory, but I am Dr. Eric Tate. I am one of his partners. Good evening, everyone. My name is Dr. Eric Tate. I represent the Umbrella Company. I'm one of the partners in the firm. We are a specialty chemical manufacturing company that is looking to start doing business here in the Jackson community. I want to thank the city council and Mayor Horn for allowing us to speak and introduce ourselves into the community. We do specialty manufacturing for building maintenance, fleet maintenance, parks and rec, mosquito control, rodent abatement, and all of our products are made in the USA and are 100% natural and non-toxic. And so we are a small business that is growing. We are based in Houston, Texas, but we will look to have a presence here in the Jackson area with a sales representative, and if we are able to get enough business in Mississippi, we can put a mixing plant as well, which will create jobs, $18 an hour up, but you don't need to have a two-year degree or a four-year degree, because it's a mixing plant. And so we just wanted to introduce ourselves to the community, and we look forward to coming back and forging relationships and creating a partnership. That is it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. So colleagues, that ends public comment. We're gonna now move to, this is gonna be a good steward of everyone's time, item 46, which is a proclamation, and then we will move to item 47, which is a resolution, and then we will get back to consent agenda.
Proclamation recognizing October 2025 as Breast Cancer and Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
Mayor, you could've come this way. Tripping over nothing.
Thank you, Mr. President, and to the ladies and gentlemen of the council, let me first say how much I appreciate those of you who were able to attend the state of the city address today, and members of the audience who also might have had an opportunity to do that. We really appreciate your attendance and your interest. Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen of the council, I'd like to ask that my wife, Dr. Juanita Doty, and Ms. Beverly Cole join me at the podium. If there's anyone else here with breast cancer awareness month representation, please also join us, and I'd like She-Rose to also join us.
Ms. Eva Jones, you've been summoned.
Mr. President, members of the council, most of us know that October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month and Domestic Violence Awareness Month. It's recognized across the nation as Breast Cancer Awareness Month, serving as a time to educate our communities, promote early detection, and support the countless families touched by breast cancer. In addition, October is also recognized as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, highlighting the urgent need to address and prevent domestic violence within our community. And so the city of Jackson is committed to connecting residents with vital resources, advocating for prevention, and uniting community organizations to promote safer environments, and also to support survivors of breast cancer, to uplift families, and ensure our city is a safe haven for all. This past Sunday, we also honored Dr. Juanita Doty, who's here with us today with the proclamation, declaring this past Sunday is Juanita Sims Doty Day in Jackson, Mississippi. So I'm pleased to have her join us for this acknowledgement of Breast Cancer Awareness and Domestic Violence Prevention Month for the month of October. And I'd like to present this to my first lady and ask that Ms. She and Ms. Doty accept this. Likewise, Mr. President, and members of the council, we have another proclamation that honors butterflies by grace defined by faith. She-Rose Awards Gala. Butterflies by grace defined by faith founded by Ms. Eva C. Jones has served for 15 years as a beacon of advocacy, empowerment, and hope for survivors of domestic violence. The organization continues to provide education, awareness, and resources to end domestic violence while uplifting survivors with compassion, strength, and resilience. The She-Rose Award Gala, Awards Gala, has become the signature event of butterflies by grace defined by faith, celebrating survivors, honoring courageous community leaders and advocates, and inspiring a unified commitment to justice and healing. And by the virtue of the power vested in me, as mayor, I do hereby honor and recognize butterflies by grace defined by faith and the 15th Annual She-Rose Awards Gala for their extraordinary service, advocacy, and commitment to ending domestic violence.
Come on, come on around. Come on around.
Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen of the council, I'd also like to recognize my sister-in-law, Beverly Cole, who, Beverly recently returned to Mississippi and to the Jackson area after having served for 43 years as the, an official with the office of the comptroller of the currency. She was in charge of small banking in New York and Massachusetts markets, and she didn't take no stuff. I call her the iron maiden. I say that she chews nails for breakfast, but she served very admirably and ably in that position, having also served as the special assistant to the number-two person at the office of the comptroller of the currency. I'd appreciate if everybody give her a round of applause. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So I see now we know who to call other than Mrs. Horn, if you start acting up. All right. All right. We will now move to item 47. Clerk?
Resolution of appreciation for the longtime success of Lemuria Books.
If Mr. John Evans could meet me at the podium, please. The, I'd like to begin this with reading this resolution of appreciation for the longtime success of Lemuria Books. Whereas in October 1975, Lemuria, a locally owned and operated bookstore, opened for business in the quarter with John Evans as the founder. Lemuria moved to Highland Village in 1977 and to Banner Hall in 1988, adding extra space for browsing and special programs. And whereas Lemuria has prospered despite a book industry roiled by waves of disruption and continues to this day offering high-quality selection, sage suggestions, and a personal touch that keeps readers coming back year after year. And whereas stories are the lifeblood of culture and books are the vessels that preserve and sustain our culture for future generations. And whereas reading and writing are important life skills that need to be nurtured and mentored, and Lemuria has done just that for five decades with a broad selection of books and friendly advice for readers of all ages. And whereas Lemuria has hosted many great authors at their venues, to include Eudora Welty, Willie Morris, Jasmine Ward, Winston Groom, John Grisham, and James Dickey, while at the same time also nurturing aspiring writers from the local community. And whereas dedicated entrepreneurs like John Evans and his team at Lemuria are vital to the economic well-being of Jackson, we celebrate Lemuria's success with the same passion that they celebrate books, authors, and their many avid readers across Jackson and the state of Mississippi. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Jackson City Council recognize and celebrate Lemuria Books for its half-century of successful service to the Jackson community, done this 21st day of October 19, of 2025.
Thank you, John.
So if you could, if you want to recognize any family members that are here and, okay? Sure, that'd be great. If they could come forward, if you could offer us any words of encouragement.
Well, and Mel, please. And they, these adults grew up working in our bookstore, and Mel and I started it in 1975. I think this honor means a lot to me, because I care so much for Jackson and the idea of what Jackson can do going forward, and what I would hope that Lemuria can mean to the future of Jackson, encouraging new readers, supporting the book festival, and just asking the city council to care about our city, which we all love. And thank you for your work. Please continue and keep reading.
Come around for your photo, please. Okay. Come around. You know, we gotta do what Jay tells us to do. Come around. Family, family? Thank you. Colleagues, we're gonna go ahead and go for it with item 13.
Order confirming Mayor John Hunt's appointment of Gillian Caldwell as Chief Financial Officer of the City of Jackson, Mississippi.
So I said, move it properly, second, Ms. Caldwell. Mayor, do you want to make the introduction, or do you just wanna?
Well, I'll just say that in the course of the last three-and-a-half months, I've been incredibly impressed by Ms. Caldwell, her knowledge, her responsiveness, her professionalism, and her, her understanding of numbers and budgets and how they work, and I think she'll do an exemplary job in the position.
Thank you. Ms. Caldwell, if you don't mind giving a brief introduction of yourself, and then colleagues, we'll do one line of questions, starting with Ward One. If this, if it's necessary to move to another round, then we'll do that, but we'll just gauge it, you know, with respect to how the first round goes. Ms. Caldwell?
Thank you, Councilman Brazil. Thank you, Mayor Horn, for nominating me for this position. I appreciate all of the acknowledgements. My name is Gillian Anderson Caldwell. I'm currently comptroller, looking to be the next chief financial officer for the city of Jackson. I started my educational career with the, with, at Jackson State University, and I graduated from 2005 with a Bachelor of Business Administration, and I went on to Mississippi College and graduated from there in 2009 with my Master of Business Administration. I come from a family of public servants. My father was, is John Anderson. He's in the audience, and he served 45 years with the city of Jackson in different capacities. My mother, she was a former city employee, ended up retiring from the United States Postal Service, and my sister is currently a doctor with the United, University of Mississippi Medical Center. And of course, my, last but not least, my husband, James Caldwell, as you all know, is the deputy director of Public Works. So I come from a long line of public service, and I look forward to continuing that. As far as my professional career, I have over 20 years of experience in the finance division. I started in 2004 as a public works intern, and I was look, responsible for overseeing the revenue collection program as it relates to parking meter collections. And from there, when I graduated from Jackson State, I was promoted to accountant one in May of 2005. From there, I was promoted to accountant two in 2008, senior accountant in 2015, assistant finance manager in 2016, and ultimately comptroller, where I'm currently working. I have worked in every aspect of this department. I've worked with the payroll, accounts payable, travel, grants, assets, budgets, purchasing, treasury, and different aspects of municipal court services. So that's, that's a little bit about my career and my educational background. If given this opportunity, I look forward to continuing to serve this great community in a new capacity by improving and streamlining our fiscal processes, strengthening internal controls, creating clearer workflows, and building a reputation of accountability so decisions can be made with the most efficient and effective use of public resources. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Caldwell. We're gonna begin with Ward One.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Ms. Caldwell, for being here tonight. You've got an impressive resume, and you bring with you a lot of institutional knowledge, because you've worked with the city for so long, which is, which is a good thing. My question is, we've had a real challenge, difficult time getting our audits turned in on a timely basis, and it is really, you know, undermines our effectiveness as a city. What can you do, what will you do, or can you do, or try to do, to help us get our audits in on a timely manner?
So first, my priority would be to streamline our processes. I know the auditor says it takes a long time for him to get certain reports, and I feel like that's because we don't do enough things on a daily basis to prepare for those year-end processes. And so overseeing the department and those other areas that all have a part in getting that audit completed, I think there are more things that can be done on a daily basis to assist with that process.
Okay, thank you. That's the only question I've got right now.
Ward Two?
Okay, over the last year, I've worked with you, I've enjoyed working with you, and I know your son is back there, and you forgot to mention him. I say congratulations to you. Don't forget about your family. Continue to work hard and strive to get your CPA, which we talk about all the time. Good luck.
Thank you.
Ward Three?
Thank you, Mr. President. I thought it'd take a second to say to Ms. Caldwell that her family is very, very special, very good people, hard workers, Mr. Anderson, as long as I've been at the city, he was here when I got here, and hated when he retired. He worked in personnel the last years. He worked with the city, but they're good people, and I know the apple will not fall too far from the tree. So they're great. I know you're going to be wonderful also. I have no problem in voting for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the nicest you ever.
Yes, Ms. Caldwell, first of all, thank you for your years of service with the city. I think I, I was on board during part of your tenure, and my memories is just always professional and kind and, and very knowledgeable. And you learn under folks like Rick Hill and others. Just the one thing, in addition to what Councilman Foot mentioned about the audits, annual audit, that's, that's a real important priority. The other issue is invoices and our ability to relate and to do business with outside vendors, et cetera. We have to build up that confidence in them that we're about the business. And so those are the only two, but I look forward to supporting you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And Ward Seven?
Thank you very much. Very excited about your nomination, and thank you for sharing your diverse experience and range that you've presented here. My only question is, if confirmed, how will you work with city council?
So over the last few weeks or so, I have had the opportunity to sit in and see the questions that you all asked, and they're good questions, they're tough questions, and I think you need someone who is knowledgeable of your, you know, finances and the logistics of your finances to be able to help you understand, you know, what's going on with the budgets and every matter of the city so that you can make those, the best decisions to move this city forward. Yes.
All right, Ms. Caldwell, how would you define your leadership style?
So I, I lead by example. I try to show my employees how I would do things. I don't micromanage. I do, I rely on their professionalism and just their knowledge to get them through, you know, whatever processes we have. When we do have an issue, I always try to see, you know, what do you all suggest? Let me, let me see what, because they're the experts at their level. And so I, I rely a lot on their own knowledge to kind of get us through issues, and I just kind of, you know, help facilitate the process to come to a resolution.
Okay. As CFO, you would be the face of finance, right? And, you know, I've worked in accounting, and I know a lot of accountants are very introverted, and you're soft-spoken, and, you know, it can get, knowing that you married the Caldwell, y'all just don't like peace, do you? And so when it comes to the numbers, you know, I just encourage you to, you know, you're the expert. You say your people are the expert. Good, it's a team thing, right? But when it comes to this, this council, you're the expert, and just know your stuff and stand on it, all right? And just be proactive, because we don't know what's going to happen when you come in here, you know? So that's the only thing I got. Any more? Do we need another round of questions?
Mr. President, I'd like to do a follow-up.
Yes, sir.
On the question of the audit, I called a come-to-Jesus meeting last week. You know, we inherited a situation where the city has not done an audit and it's submitted since 2022. And we've been working for, for the last three and a half months in this administration with the CPA firm. We've been very impatient about getting 23 done. And last week, I got a firm commitment from the CPA firm that we will have the 23 audit put to bed by the first week of November. So as we go forward, I have a lot of confidence in Ms. Caldwell's ability to help us streamline that, that audit process going forward for 24, and now we, we're owing for 25. So we'll be putting some measures in place that speak to a more speedy recovery of, of the audit, and I hope that we won't be sitting here a year from now waiting on the 24 audit.
Thank you, Mayor. Any more questions, colleagues?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, thank you for the leadership. Over the years, when we had Banks, Finley, and White, and I know it's Brown year, and now, everything was routine. All this was done, fund balance. It's just when they tried to change things that we end up not having all of it done since, what, '22? Why would you change from people who were successful? I never could understand. Banks, Finley, and White made sure everything was done perfectly for the City of Jackson. It makes no sense that now we have other people come with new ideas that's bagging this city up. We don't have our money straight, and we got a lot of issues. I hope we get rid of those people.
Well, I, I can't speak to how the current firm was selected. I wasn't here then, but I will say that we are going to go forward in an expeditious fashion.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, so now back to Ms. Caldwell. Ready for a vote? All in favor? Six-zero. Congratulations. Now, you can't go nowhere because you got to present large claims. All right, colleagues, we're going to go ahead with the, yes, I'm sorry, yes, I'm so sorry. Please let us know who you brought here with you today. And make sure you cover everybody. She's also an AK. She, now, she, I asked her the other day, because her signature is pink and green, but she never, is not in her resume anything. I said, are you an AK? She said, yes, I am. Gamma Ro.
Mr. President.
Gamma Ro.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Her father isn't a member of Omega Sapphire.
Whoa. Okay.
I'm eternal finksman.
Let me pull this gavel up. That's right. All right, let's move to consent agenda.
All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately.
So move. Second. It's been moved in properly, second. Colleagues, as mentioned, in order to discuss anything in the consent agenda, we will have to request, there needs to be a request to pull it, okay? Not seeing any. All in favor? Six-zero. Thank you. Next, introduction of ordinances, we don't have any adoption of ordinances.
Ordinance amending mobile food vending ordinance to add the additional classification of mobile tent vendor, establish fees for each class of vendor, and include provisions of servability and conflict.
So move. Second. It's been moved in properly, second. So, item seven, Mr. Tableson, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the council, we currently have a mo- mobile food truck ordinance in the City of Jackson, and we're expanding that ordinance to allow for portable tents under limited circumstances. This does not affect individuals who are selling prepackaged food, such as Girl Scout cookies, but it does allow those who might not have a food, mobile food truck, but want to do similar types of sales at events, to get a permit from the city to do so.
Thank you, Ms. Tableson. And colleagues, you know, we had a, a really in-depth conversation about this yesterday in work session, as well as the last meeting when it was introduced, and just to be clear, no Girl Scouts will be arrested or ticketed for selling cookies, all right? Are there any more questions or comments about this item? Hearing none, all in favor? Six-zero. Thank you. Item eight?
Ordinance of the City Council of Jackson, Mississippi renaming Pearl Street from I-55 to Pearl Street to North State Street to Frank Milton Drive.
So move. Second. It's been moved in properly, second. Any questions or comments about this item? Mr. Stokes, you?
Mr. President, I'm not going to be lone this item because I know it's a long meeting, but it's the right thing to do. I've heard people say this and that about Frank Milton. No one had as many fights than Kenneth Stokes, but this man truly loved this city. And you have to feel something in your heart for his wife and his children. You know, again, we're going to stop at State Street, it's not going to interfere with any businesses or anything, but it's a way to tell this family that we love them. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hartley?
Yeah, and just, just one other thing, in addition to the comments of Councilman Stokes, Frank Milton is still a legend over in my part of town, you know, and that reminder, that love and tenacity that he had in crime prevention and, and in other things, you know, it, it still holds a lot of weight. And so we appreciate Councilman Stokes. I'm setting this up, and I look forward to voting for it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Foot?
The, down at the bottom on the last sentence here, it says, so ordain this the blank day of September 2025. Do we need to amend that, or is it, make any difference?
Clerk says no.
We don't?
Okay. We don't. Okay. Any more questions or comments? All right, hearing none, all in favor? Seven-zero. Very good. Item nine?
Ordinance of the City Council of Jackson, Mississippi renaming the Pearl Street Bridge from I-55 to Pearl Street to North State Street to Frank Milton Bridge.
So move. It's been moved in properly, second. Any questions or comments about this item? Mr. Stokes?
Thank you, Mr. President. For members of this body, it was a councilman named Derwood Boars. They had Boars and Moke Insurance Company. He taught me something, and one thing he taught me is that, that one time in this city, the interstate did not come into Jackson. He first introduced, it was a commissioner, legislation to build this bridge, and it was turned down. He brought it back again, and that's why we have the bridge today, and we had the interstate as part of it. We've had some hard-working council members and other people in this city for many, many years, and Frank Milton was a bridge builder. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Stokes. Anyone else? Hearing none, all in favor? Seven-zero. Very good. Now, the new, oh, there she is. All right, I said, where's that new CFO? Let's go ahead and move to claims.
Order proving claims appearing at Pages 24 to inclusive their own on municipal docket of claims in the amount of $7,234,570.82 for and making appropriation for the payment thereof.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved in properly, second. Ms. CFO Caldwell, would you please cover the large claim?
Julian Caldwell, Chief Financial Officer.
That's it.
The first largest claim is Richard's Disposal, Inc. of Jackson, $851,000. The Solid Waste Collection Fund, nine. The second largest claim is to AdCamp, Inc., the amount is $585,651.47 paid by Fund 173, the 1% infrastructure tax fund. The third largest claim is to MB Contract Transportation, Inc., the amount is $391,806.79 from Fund 187, the transportation fund. The fourth largest claim is the, is to the Evans Agency, the amount is $343,089 from Fund One, the general fund.
That's it? All right. Are there any questions or comments about claims, colleagues? Mr. Hartley?
Do you have the, the amount paid to Entergy?
Entergy, um, I can get that total for you.
Please.
All right. Any more questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Seven-zero. All right. Payroll?
Order proving gross payroll, including payroll deduction claims number 32910 and two, and making appropriation for the payment thereof.
So move. Second. It's been moved in properly, second. Any questions or comments about payroll? Hearing none, all in favor? Seven-zero. Thank you, colleagues. Item 12?
Order confirming the appointment of Mayor John A. Horn to the Central Mississippi Planning and Development District, Inc.
So move. Second. It's been moved in properly, second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Seven-zero. Thank you. Item 14?
Order authorizing the mayor to execute the renewal of the 12-month city works license and maintenance agreement with Azteca Systems LLC City Works Software for the receipt and tracking of all non-emergency constituent services requests.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved in properly, second. Any questions or comments about item 14?
Question?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I don't see Mr. Lot, Mr. Mayor, with this item, can you kind of bring us up to speed with all, will be included? So many people, when they call trying to get help, they appreciate this line. It makes a big difference, and I think Mr. Lot was trying to find a way to improve it even more, and I, I don't see him in the chambers, but I will support this item.
I'm not sure about any improvements. This is a renewal of the existing contract. I'm not sure we can, under this renewal, deal with any improvements, but we'll look into it for sure. But this, this is our 311 tracking system, and it's been proved to be effective thus far, but we'll, we'll look at ways that we might be able to improve it.
I know when we speak to people in our ward, first thing they ask was the tracking number. It makes a big difference, because at one time they didn't have a tracking number. And that way, the citizens can see what's going on with their complaint, what's the status of it, and whether they playing games with them. That's why I'm saying it, it, it's great. Is it some way that the citizens say that when I call the City of Jackson, get some action on my call, I'm going to know what's going on? So I, I support this item. This is a good item. Thank you.
All right. Any more questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Seven-zero. Thank you. Fifteen?
Order ratifying the emergency procurement of web development and support services from Red Laser Technology, Inc., and authorizing the payment of invoice number 202500187 in the amount of $33,000, and further authorizing the procurement of maintenance support and training services at a cost of $5,000 per month for a period of four months.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved in properly, second. These are one of the items that came up yesterday in work session. Are there any more questions or comments about this item? Hearing none, all in favor? Everybody, seven-zero? Ms. Clay, how did you vote? Okay. Thank you. Sixteen?
Order proving the payment of invoices received by the Jackson Police Department from Live Oak Psychological Associates.
So move. Second. It's been moved in properly, second. This is another one of those items we had a really good conversation about yesterday. Are there any more questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Seven-zero. Thank you. Oh, seven. Well, she said that she thought that they should pull it, but I have not received official notice that they're going to pull it. Are y'all pulling it?
We'll pull it.
Okay, thank you. I know what I'm talking about, man. All right. Item 18?
Order authorizing the City of Jackson- Order authorizing the city of Jackson to release the titles of vehicles and equipment sold by the propertyroom.com.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved in properly. Second, uh, any more questions or comments about this item?
Statement, Mr. President.
Mr. Stokes?
Thank you. I want to thank Chief Shav, Shav Chief Jones for his hard work and being a man among men. At a time when things go on and a lot of criticism out there, he's not running from the fight. He's running to the fight, and he's ready to speak to anybody that have questions about what's going on. And to make a big difference, he's here as the interim, uh, Mr. Mayor, but he's trying to uphold what Lee Vance and others have taught him, trained him. But we're not gonna hide or dodge issues. We're gonna talk about everything anybody want to talk about. We're gonna be open. That's the only way government gonna be successful if the police department openly talk back to the citizens and answer the citizen's question. So thank you, Mr. Mr. Mayor for finding someone that's not afraid to tackle a hard job and a hard problem. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any more questions or comments about item eighteen? Hearing none, all in favor? Seven zero. Thank you. Nineteen?
Order ratifying and approving payment of invoices submitted by Animal Medical Center for Goods and Services rendered to the Jackson Police Department.
So move.
Second. It's been moved in properly. Second, any questions or comments about item nineteen?
Question?
Yes, sir.
Chief, how many drug dogs do we have?
Good evening, Chief Tyree Jones, interim Chief Tyree Jones. Uh, we have two drug dogs assigned to the Narcotics Division.
How many do they have at the county, at the chapter?
Right now, we have, we have two assigned to the county also.
Do you feel we need more?
There's always a need for more, but you got to have the personnel to go along with the, uh, with the dog. And it requires training and certification. So you just can't take a dog and give it to somebody and tell them to go, go work it. They got to build a relationship.
We used to have that match. The government pays you, send us some money, and we used to use that to kind of purchase dogs in years past.
Yes, there is a grant that's still available through, um, I have to get the name of the, um, the venue. But there is a grant that's available with the purchase of a dog. It pays so much instead of the purchase of a dog. We've used it with the county. I'm not exactly sure if the cities used it in the past, but there is a grant available for it.
Now, the money we used to seize from drug dealers, we used to use that money also to purchase dogs. And we, do we have an accounting as to how much money we currently have in net fund, money that's been seized from drug dealers?
I don't have an accurate count.
You can just get the council members a memo.
Yes, sir.
Thank you all so much.
All right.
Any more questions about, question, I mean, item nineteen? Hearing none, all in favor? Thank you. Item twenty?
Order ratifying the Jackson Police Department's termination of Project Prove It with Flock Group, Inc., Raven in the City of Jackson Police Department.
So move.
Second. It's been moved in properly. Second, we had a really in-depth conversation about this item yesterday. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Okay, Mr. Foot?
I just had a comment. Uh, we had this discussion yesterday, but I think it's really important that we have processes in place where we can actually test the stuff and find out how it's working before we have to terminate it because there's some payment coming due. And, and for whatever reason, when this was put in place, we didn't get to that point. And, and we've got to have better processes if we're gonna try something that has a deadline of a hundred and eighty days before you decide whether you want to actually use it or not. So we didn't even get a chance to find out if it was, uh, you know, the reason I say this is technology is a combat multiplier. And that's in the military, and it's also in the police, in the law enforcement. And so it's important that we use those technologies to multiply and take advantage and leverage the, all the sworn officers we have. And so it's important that we find out what works, and then we want to put that stuff to work for us if it, if it's effective. So we need to have processes so we can properly evaluate the technology, technologies we try out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stokes. Mr. Hartley?
Yes, if we could, uh, if KPD can continue to aggressively look for something to replace this, uh, Shot Spotters and other technologies is really important. So if we can keep, keep on that and not, you know, not drop the ball on that. Thank you.
Thank you. I think they're gonna do it, but after we get the new chief, right? That, that's the plan. Okay. And not be putting stuff in folks' yard without their permission. Thank you. All right. That's what they did. All in favor? Seven zero. Thank you, colleagues. All right, item twenty-one?
Order authorizing the petty cash fund for the Jackson Police Department for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six.
So move.
Second. It's been moved in properly. Second, any more questions or comments about this item? Hearing none, all in favor? Seven zero. Item twenty-two?
Order requesting ratification of payment to Warren Oil Company LLC for the purchase of emergency gasoline for the Pete Brown Golf Course from the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget.
So move.
Second. It's been moved in properly. Second, any questions or comments about this item?
Question?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Taverson, um, Grove Park. Mr. Mayor, before y'all got here, was promises, promises, promises. Grove Park was gonna open up. It's coming back. It was opened up. I rode by there yesterday. It's like a hay field.
It is.
Overgrown stuff. Are we gonna move forward sometime near future, open Grove Park back up?
Yes, sir. Uh, I have been out there within the last two or three weeks with Mr. Sibley as well from the mayor's office. I was disappointed to see that the, uh, clubhouse was unsecured. And Mr. Sibley and I went there and rescued a number of historical items out of the clubhouse that was unsecured, unsecured, I'm sorry. Uh, we definitely intend to move forward. Uh, there is a plan we're working through to relocate what would be the clubhouse to the community center, reopen the nine-hole course, and of course, do the other things that the city council has budgeted money for. That is a twenty twenty-six priority for this administration to get Grove Park back to being the center of that part of the city where many folks grew up playing baseball, learning how to play golf, et cetera, et cetera.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. You do that, I'll be quiet. Any more questions about or comments about this item? Hearing none, all in favor? Seven zero. Thank you. Twenty-three?
Order requesting ratification of payment to Ford Plumbing and Air for the emergency repair of a water line at Palm Bridges Park to be paid from the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget.
So move.
Second. It's been moved in properly. Second, any questions or comments about this item? Hearing none, all in favor? Seven zero. Thank you. Twenty-four?
Order ratifying emergency procurement of repairs to a City of Jackson's water line leak at the City of Jackson Zoo.
So move.
Second. It's been moved in properly. Second, and we had a really good conversation about this, and the mayor talked about it today in the State of the City address, which was really, really good. Are there any more questions or comments about this item?
One, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, at the State of the City, for those who didn't hear it, your commitment was to save the zoo. And, and we thank you for that. Uh, I know it's a war at five, and I tell people all the time, when I was a child growing up, we used to hear the lions roar. The zoo is something special in the city. And not to say that we would get this zoo away or, or close it. That'll hurt so many people's hearts forever and ever. So I think the step in the right direction is to say to do, to save the zoo. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Anything else? All right, all in favor? Seven zero. Thank you. Twenty-five?
Order ratifying and authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with All About Animals, Inc. to provide veterinary care and medicine to all animals located at the Jackson Zoological Park for the sum of two thousand and seven hundred dollars per month for a period of one year beginning October first, twenty twenty-five, and ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
So move.
Second. It's been moved in properly. Second, any questions or comments about item twenty-five? Hearing none, all in favor? Seven zero. Twenty-six?
Order authorizing the mayor to enter into a memorandum of understanding for a work-based learning program by and between the Job Course Consortium of Mississippi, Inc., AKA Mississippi Job Course Center in the City of Jackson's Jackson Zoo.
So move.
Second. It's been moved in properly. Second, any questions or comments about item twenty-six? Hearing none, all in favor? Seven zero. Thank you. Item twenty-seven?
Order authorizing the mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding with Jackson Public Schools and Department of Parks, Parks, Parks and Recreation for the use of Shepherd Brothers Park for outside reunification of emergencies.
So move.
Second. It's been moved in properly. Second, any questions or comments about item twenty-seven? Mr. Hartley?
Yeah, just that one. Uh, just wanna reiterate this, as I did yesterday. Perhaps we can look at other grants. I don't know if your grants coordinator is here, but if we can, uh, look for some type of disaster or shelter or something, you know, to, in addition to this, um, we might be able to find more money. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Seven zero. Thank you. Twenty-eight?
Order authorizing the mayor to order authorizing the mayor or his designated to apply for a grant of two million dollars in response to the United States Department of Economic Development Administration, administrations FY twenty twenty-five Disaster Supplemental Notice of Funding Opportunity.
So move.
Second. It's been moved in properly. Second, any questions or comments about item twenty-eight? Hearing none, all in favor? Seven zero. Thank you. Item twenty-nine?
Order accepting a bid of Mid-South Machinery, Inc. for one asphalt paver for the Infrastructure Management Division of the Department of Public Works.
So move.
Second. All right. It's been moved in properly. Second, I know we're all excited about this item. Are there any questions or comments about this item? Hearing none, all in favor? Smooth street, seven zero.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
The question was asked yesterday on the ETA of this paper. It is sitting on the lot. So with you having approved that, we will begin the PO process, and we will purchase this. And so this should be, um, this paper should be in the city's possession and in action within the next month.
All right. Can we drive it?
Might have to give you a license.
Public Works got rid of it.
I just, uh, we're not only excited.
All right.
Yeah, Mr. Taverson, just one thing. Uh, sometimes, uh, I've, I've noted that some of the solid waste equipment we get in is urgently needed out in the, out in the field. It may get caught up with decals and other things. Is there any way we can expedite that process?
Absolutely.
Good answer. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean.
We shouldn't have anything purchased that we're not immediately putting in the inventory. Uh, Ms. Caldwell and I have already had discussions about beefing up our inventory, so we needed one inventory as soon as we receive it. Uh, since it is an asset, so we can track it. And then secondly, we need it, um, labeled and put into action as soon as we receive it. It doesn't do us any good to purchase it and have it sitting somewhere.
Agreed. Thank you, sir. Very good. Thank you. Item thirty?
Order authorizing the mayor to execute a sixteen-month rental agreement with Robert J. Young Company, LLC, doing business as RJ Young Company, for a RICO IMC thirty-ten color copier system to be used by the Care and Maintenance Division of the Department of Public Works.
So move.
Second. It's been moved in properly. Second, any questions or comments about item thirty? Hearing none, all in favor? Seven zero. All right, thirty-one?
Order authorizing the petty cash fund for the Office of the City Attorney for Fiscal Year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six.
So move.
Second. It's been moved in properly. Second, any questions or comments about item thirty-one? Hearing none, all in favor? Seven zero. Item thirty-two?
Order authorizing stipulation and compromise of all claims in the matter of the enlargement and extension of the municipal boundaries of the City of Flowood, Rankin County, Mississippi, pending in Chancery Court of Rankin County, Mississippi Civil Action Number eighteen dash thirteen ninety-five, and in the matter of the enlarging, extending, and defining the corporate limits and boundaries of the City of Pearl, Rankin County, Mississippi, pending in Chancery Court of Rankin County, Mississippi Civil Action Number eighteen dash one seven one four.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved in properly. Second, uh, Mr. Martin, we'll start with you. Go ahead.
Would you like a summary of what this order, uh, would do?
Yes.
Would you mind if I deferred to our outside counsel to give that summary?
He's on the clock. Bring him on up.
Yes, sir, he is.
And he has a suit jacket on today.
Chad Mask is our outside counsel with firm Care Warren Parker. Uh, he's gonna give you an update on that. And let me just add that, as I mentioned yesterday afternoon, if we need a in-depth discussion of this, then I will recommend that we go into executive session to do so. Um, you may, you may or may not want that after your summary, but if, if, I'll leave that to the council. Thank you.
Mayor, council, good to be here again. Uh, I know we discussed most of these issues yesterday during the work session, but to give each of you an update since the last time, uh, that we've, before the council, the most recent updates are that, uh, we had a court appearance, uh, two weeks ago. Um, most notably, uh, the settlement agreement that is on the agenda is item thirty-two has been approved, uh, by the City of Pearl and the City of Flowood at their October seventh board, respective board meetings, uh, as we discussed yesterday, uh, and, and the issue that the city has been dealing with for a number of years is that for the City of Jackson to annex in Rankin County, Mississippi, us, Mississippi Code Annotated sixty-one, nine, five, requires that the city obtain consent and approval of the Rankin County Board of Supervisors. Uh, prior to this particular case, which was commenced in two thousand eighteen, uh, the Board of Supervisors had, had never before, uh, provided the city with consent and approval during the course of litigation over the last seven or eight years. Guess that'd be seven and a half years. That is culminated, uh, in the settlement agreement that is before, uh, you for approval today. Uh, as a condition of the settlement was Rankin County Board of Supervisors granting, uh, the required, statutorily required consent and approval. Excuse me. Uh, the Board of Supervisors took this matter up, uh, on a resolution, granting such that, uh, consent and approval on, at their regular October sixth, twenty twenty-five meeting, and it passed. And so accordingly, uh, the only thing left to do, well, the two things left to do, but the only thing on the agenda for today is the City of Jackson's, uh, to the council's, uh, approval of the settlement agreement. And then subsequently, I don't believe it's on the agenda for tonight, the city will adopt an ordinance, uh, specifically annexing the legal description of the three parcels that are a part of the settlement agreement.
Colleagues, any questions? Ms. Clay?
Okay. My question is, I know this is a settlement, settlement, and I think that we think it's a good settlement. But in reality, we are getting only the sale value of the land. We still own it. I understand it one hundred percent. But we will only get funds from the sale and development. We will not get any taxes, which is what cities need to grow, right? Revenue. So we are cutting off revenue. Who will get the revenue?
The money that the City of Jackson would be entitled for the portion that it's gonna annex as a part of the settlement would be, keep in mind, the underlying property is either owned by the city or JMA, so that the land itself is taxed exempt. However, personal property such as inventory, that sort of thing, you would receive adware on taxes on that. And then if there were any sales tax producing properties on it, you would, the city would get that. And it, you can only get property taxes or sales taxes if it's in the city limits of Jackson.
The property that we are talking about, once they are annexed, once it's annexed, a developer will come in and buy this property, right?
Well, that, that's up to the city.
That's up to the city, okay?
Right.
But if the city sells it for development.
Or leases it.
Or leases it or do anything with it, what money will we get?
Well, it depends on the parcel. The, the federal law, and it's pretty complex, but the basic.
Just explain it in simple terms. It can be complex.
What federal law requires is that the proceeds from a sale or lease of the property be if it, if it was property that was funded one hundred percent by federal grants, for example, an FAA grant, then the money has got to be reinvested in the airport to the, in the same portion, uh, to the extent that the federal government funded it. For example, there's also properties out there, especially on the east side of the Parkway, which the federal government didn't fund. The City of Jackson purchased that property without any grants. And so presumably, you would get And so presumably, you would get, the city of Jackson would possibly.
Possibly.
What'd you say?
You said possible.
Right. Nothing certain in life. I think I mentioned that to you two months ago, except death and taxes.
You still have reservations. Go ahead.
And I understand. And I think one thing that's worthy of reiterating, Drew, man, it's two things that are worth reiterating, but absent the settlement agreement, Jackson isn't going to annex anything.
That is my point. It's possible that Jackson could annex it. You keep saying that it's no way we could win this case, that Rankin County is not going to do anything for us, and we could never win this case, right?
Let me address that, Councilwoman Clay, if I could. In this litigation, this judge is not entitled to annex any of the land of the city. In this litigation, the Rankin County Chancellor lacks the judicial authority to give the city any of that land to incorporate, whether we own it or not, and we do. What that means is, the answer, the direct answer to your question is, it's possible for the city to incorporate some of this land, and that's what this settlement does. It allows the city, in fact, to incorporate approximately forty percent of this land. Is that possible outside of this litigation? The answer is only with the permission of the Rankin County Board of Supervisors, which every indication we've gotten is that they would not give the city that, but we have negotiated for that approval through this settlement. And so what will end up happening if the council approves this settlement is that there will end up being, where there's currently one annexation trial, there will be two, and neither one will be opposed. One will be for the land that we've all agreed can be incorporated by Pearl and by Flowood. There'll be an unopposed annexation that'll go to the judge in about December or so, in which he will, in all likelihood, ninety-nine point whatever percent, will allow them to incorporate, annex that land. There will be a separate trial that will also be unopposed because of this settlement that'll happen a few weeks later, probably in January, in which the city will be permitted to incorporate. It's not an annexation because it's already, because of us already owning and where it is and so forth, but it's the same thing. The city will incorporate that land unopposed because of this settlement. So I don't mean to dance around. I'm not. I'm answering it directly. But the answer to your question is, in this litigation filed by the cities of Flowood and Pearl that is pending in Rankin County, that court and that judge cannot allow the city to incorporate any of this land. The only way that can be done is separately having the Rankin County Board of Supervisors approve it, and that's what this settlement accomplishes. Could there be some scenario in which Rankin would agree to that differently? Sure, it's possible, but we've explored a lot of possibilities and we haven't found one.
Mr. Parkinson.
So there is a difference between owning land and having land incorporated. Prior to this settlement, the city of Jackson and the airport owned all the land.
Correct.
After the settlement, the city of Jackson and the airport will own all the land.
Correct.
There is no transfer of ownership in this settlement whatsoever.
Correct.
The only thing that is changing is that Flowood, Pearl, and Jackson will be able to incorporate the land that we own.
That's a hundred percent accurate.
And with the portion of the land that we have, we will incorporate, we will be able to get property and sales tax on that portion.
Yes, with one caveat. The underlying land is that, to the extent that it's owned by the city of Jackson, is non-taxable. But when you have development, at least hold interest in personal property such as inventory, yes, to the extent that portion of it comes in the city of Jackson as a result of the settlement, yes, Jackson will be entitled to those taxes.
And since none of the area right now, that's in question, is currently incorporated as Jackson, we are not collecting any sales tax or any property tax in the status quo.
Correct.
But this will enable us to collect a portion of sales tax and property tax.
That's correct.
While retaining full ownership.
What was the last one?
While retaining full ownership, even of the portions that will be incorporated by Pearl.
That's correct.
Those are my questions.
And if there was a simple way to think of this settlement, it is this. By litigating in this for seven years and, you know, all parties have done a good job, and there's a lot of legal issues in the annexation, but we were able to negotiate a consent and approval by the Rankin County Board of Supervisors, and we're not getting that without this settlement. That's the bottom line.
And I did, I'm sorry, Drew Martin, City Attorney, I did want to add just one more thing. In all this talk about taxes, it's important to remember the cost proposition here as well. On any land that's incorporated by any of these municipalities, Jackson, Pearl, Flowood, yes, you can recover the taxes. Yes, you're also responsible for going out there and providing the services, including the water and sewer. By this agreement, Pearl, who already has their water and sewer services pretty close to where this land is, has agreed to provide those services and use their best efforts for that to happen within the next eighteen months. So land that was woodlands and undevelopable a few years ago, now has a parkway on it that's developable, will, if this is approved, will soon have water and sewer services that the city of Pearl will provide and pay for. And of course, that's part of why they want to get those taxes, because they got to pay for providing those services.
Question. Mr. Stokes?
Thank you. As long as there's a lawsuit, it's some kind of state law that can they not annex any more property here, talking about Pearl and Flowood?
The mic is out. The mic is out.
What's the state law concerning annexation?
Right.
When you in litigation?
How annexation works is the statutes that, there's a number of statutes, section twenty-one, one twenty-seven set forth the procedures. And essentially, there's no essentially to it. State statutes require that for a city to annex property, it's got to be adjacent to the existing city. And so here, the property in question is three hundred, it totally encircles the existing airport property. And of course, remember, the existing airport property is already inside the city limits of Jackson and has been since nineteen sixty-four. So Pearl and Flowood, Pearl primarily on the east side of the airport, Flowood primarily on the north and west side of the Flowood of the airport, excuse me, are adjacent to this property, and they are seeking to annex. Jackson historically has been unable to annex in Rankin County because the way that Jackson was able to incorporate this island, so to speak, that, keep in mind, it's already in the city limits, but it doesn't touch the rest of the city, right? It's several miles, it's an island several miles from the rest of the city. So in the night, I think it was nineteen sixty-four, the state legislature passed this legislation that allowed Jackson to incorporate it, this airport, as a part of its city limits. But it put a caveat in there, and it said, the city isn't going to, Jackson isn't going to be able to annex again in the future in Rankin County unless it obtains consent and approval of the Rankin County Board of Supervisors. Now, and so that is, that hadn't happened. And so for since, what is that, seventy-five years at the airport, since the airport property was incorporated, seventy-two, something like that? No, sixty-two. My math is terrible. Thank you. I should know that because I'm born in seventy, then I'm fifty-five. But that's right. That's sixty-one years ago. Since the airport was incorporated in sixty-one, for sixty-one years, you've had this, basically, it's like a doughnut, all the way around the airport, this unincorporated Rankin County. About in the year, I think it was two thousand and one, so about twenty-five years ago, Pearl tried to annex some of it, and it, they annexed a little of it, but not much. And so for the last twenty-five years, this hasn't been an issue, but it is now.
Well, the bad taste that's in a lot of citizens' mouths is that down Lakeland Drive, Highway twenty-five, I guess, most of the development that has taken place.
Is unlikely.
Sales taxing that those areas are getting.
Right.
Is airport property.
Right. And I want to point.
A question that came up when they were doing it, is how in the world this supposed to be airport property, but the city of Jackson getting now they diamond sales tax?
And I think, go ahead.
They feel there's some trickery taking place, and they feel the same thing going to happen with this. They feel this is a slow way to take the airport. Now, I know over the years, when we try to annex different parts of Madison, Rankin, other places, they would come with a state law that you already involved in litigation and you can't annex. And that's the first question I ask you. But if we let Pearl and Flowood off the hook with this lawsuit, then what next are they going to take?
Well, and I think I want to, Councilman, the property that I believe you're talking about is right there at the corner of Lakeland Drive and Airport Road, like, this Malk, I don't know if it's Malko, but where the theater is, and I think there's a mug shots maybe, but that strip mall right there and that, the theater that was built probably thirty years ago, that at one time was, if that's the property you're talking about, was owned by the city and or JMAA, the airport. You know, obviously, I think that was way before my time, but apparently, Jackson and or JMA received a release from the FAA and sold that property to private developers about thirty years ago. And that's, by the way, that property is not a part of what we're talking about today.
But when they sold that, they also own so much more that the city was supposed to get sales tax and everything else, and all the sales tax money is out of going, I think, Flowood.
You're exactly right.
I know. I was here. I saw the whole thing materialize.
Because that was, well, I'm not going to criticize the deal thirty years ago. That wasn't a part of, but the bottom line is, that is in the city limits of Flowood. And that's exactly why this settlement is a good deal for Jackson, because Jackson is going to be annexing a part of it, and it's going about four hundred acres, and four hundred acres is going to be in the city limits of Jackson.
The four hundred acres that we're giving this in that little square.
Can I address one other part of that for Councilman Stokes? I just want to add this. I will say it. I don't know enough details, but that was a bad deal. And it was a bad deal because the city sold its land, and by selling its land, it lost control of what it could do with that land. And that's why this is so important. What we did fight for here is to not, as Councilman Parkinson already pointed out, we, the city, will not give up one inch of ownership of any of this property in this part, and that was important to us.
Ms. Clay?
We will not give up ownership till somebody's ready to buy.
And even then, that won't, but that won't be.
And the taxes are gone. So.
I hear you.
I understand that.
And I hope nobody does that.
The little square that we getting is a little square at the top, right?
It's a bigger square. It's forty percent of the property. And there's a map attached.
What can it be used for?
It can be used for commercial development. It can be used for warehouses. There's land that, some of it is on the parkway.
But we don't even know the price of what we getting from UPS for the part that's out there.
We did look that up. I don't know if that information is here today or not. You're correct. What I'm saying is, let me put it this way. The deal that Councilman Stokes is talking about, the city sold land and allowed it to be put into another city. This settlement does not do that. I can't speak to what the city will decide is the best use of the land. I can't speak to what a developer will want to do with it, how valuable it is. Those are all questions that I wish I knew more about. I wouldn't be practicing law and I'd be making more money. But what I do know is that this deal does not give away one inch of land, that it incorporates forty percent of what's out there at the airport, that it leaves no more land available for Pearl to come after, it leaves no more land for Flowood to come after, it leaves no more land for Brandon, Rankin County, anybody to come after. This will resolve all of the incorporation issues that involve the airport. Now, keep in mind, there is a whole separate lawsuit that involves the control of the airport. There's a state law that was passed several years ago that seeks to replace what is currently JMAA, which is a board controlled and appointed by the city and its governing authorities. This lawsuit has nothing to do with that lawsuit either. That is a lawsuit that we're going to continue to fight, and we don't have any intention of coming, I don't have any intention of coming before this council and asking you to give up control of that board or of that airport. And I don't have any interest in coming before this council and asking the city to give up any of the land it owns. What I know is that Rankin County has that land in terms of incorporate, it's not incorporated, it's unincorporated Rankin County. What I know is that the lawsuit filed by Brandon and Pearl has been out there for a long time, and they are seeking to control one hundred percent of the unincorporated land. What I know legally is that this judge has the authority to give them that, and that he does not have the authority to give us incorporation of one inch of it. So, we looked at what is the best thing that we could, what is the best outcome for the city? It's to incorporate as much of that land as possible. It's to maintain ownership of all of that land. And then it's up to people that are smarter than me about developing land to figure out how to develop that so that we, so that the city and the airport can reap the benefits of whatever those developments are. And to the extent that there are taxes that can be earned on the improvements to that property, the city will be able to share in that on the portion that's incorporated by the city. You are absolutely right, Councilman Clay. I told you before, some of that land that the city's going to incorporate isn't as valuable as some of the land on the parkway. But keep in mind that some of the land is on the parkway that the city is going to incorporate. And keep in mind that Rankin County and Pearl and Flowood, they can't put a hotel, they can't put a movie theater, they can't put a restaurant, they can't put a hot dog stand on that land without the city of Jackson saying, yeah, we want that, and here's what we're going to get for it.
Going to get for it? What do you mean?
I mean, whatever they, whatever they want, whatever a developer wants to pay for the development of that land, the city is a hundred percent in control of making that decision. And if the developer doesn't offer enough money, and the city wants to say no, that's what we'll say.
But once that development is made, what do we get?
Whatever, whatever we agreed and contracted with for them to pay us. And hopefully, hopefully, that'll be good money. And the airport will get some of it as well, by the way.
That's a lump sum, right?
Not necessarily. It can be, it can be a hundred-year lease. It can be a, it can be a fifty-year lease. It depends. If somebody wants to come in there and build a warehouse right next to those runways so they can put stuff and get it right there and get it into the airport and ship it in and ship it out and make us a shipment hub, that's taxable. Okay? And, and that is a lease on that land. We don't have to sell one inch of it.
Okay. I hope when we do this, or when you all do this, that we'll look at leasing and not selling, okay?
I think that's smart. I don't make the decisions of what the city does with its land, and I'm not telling you, you have to do this. But I do think this is the very best deal we can get out of this for the city, and I think it is the way to make sure that we can get some taxes and hopefully a lot. And I know that it protects our ability to lease that land for whatever we can get for it.
Anyone else? All right. Going to call for the vote. All in favor? Opposed? Five-two. Thank you. I really do appreciate the debate, colleagues. Item thirty-three.
Order reviewing and continuing August twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-two, state of emergency.
So moved. It's been moving in properly second. The questions or comments about this item. Do we have to take this vote? I can't remember now. I'm drained. We vote on this? All right. All in favor? Seven zero. Thank you. Woo. Might need a recess until next week. All right. Item thirty-four.
Order reviewing and continuing state of emergency.
So moved.
Second.
Been moving in properly second. All right. All in favor? Seven zero. Thank you. Thirty-five.
Order confirming the city council's appointment of Kevin Parkinson to the Capitol Complex Improvement District Project Advisory Committee.
Any questions or comments about this? Second. I've been moving in properly second. Any questions or comments about this item? Hearing none. All in favor? Seven zero. Thank you. They expect great things, Councilman Parkinson. Item thirty-six.
Resolution of the city council strongly supporting the city of Jackson, Mississippi, employing teenage youth.
Councilman Stokes?
Second.
All right. It's been moving in properly second. Councilman Stokes?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, when I listened to the mayor's State of the Union today, I was, I was struck by so many things. But one thing he mentioned was to our young people, we must find a way to change the mindset of a number of young people in this city. From killers and criminals, being able to hide them, giving them jobs, that would change their mindset. That would change their mindset. I'm not saying jobs just during the summer when school is out. A lot of our young people, you see them at the fast food places. Think about if the city would find money where we can work with maybe the libraries, make sure on weekends, they would just be part-time workers, but they create that, that mentality that I earned my money, I go cash my check. They'll feel so good about themselves. Some of these young people, and they came to me having a baby, ready to drop out of school, and, you know, people frown, but a lot of young men want to do the right thing. And they said that if you have a child, take care of your child. Suppose we can keep them at school and still have that part-time job for them. I think some of the money we, we got back, I'm gonna use that terminology, from a company that was supposed to be cleaning up the street, we didn't see any major effort. What about these young people, these teenagers? Find a way to give them some of that money where they can work and feel good about themselves. If we do not do something now to put that train on the right track, might be you running to them with that gun that the police department tell us about, where they got this regular gun that they done made a machine gun. We need to do something. And this item is a step in the right direction, it's a resolution, but it's a good resolution. But we can employ these young people, can't employ all of them, but we can also encourage some of these businesses to don't force a young person working at a hamburger joint and then drop out of school, cause they tired. Getting off eleven, twelve o'clock in the morning, then got to go to school, they sleep in the classroom, they tired. Government, government must be that link to getting these young people. A good check, hard day's work, but we're not gonna let these people stop going to school. These young people must have a good quality education. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, any more questions or comments about this item? Hearing none, all in favor? Seven, zero, thank you. Item thirty-seven.
Resolution of the city council of Jackson, Mississippi commemorating the thirtieth anniversary of the Million Man March of nineteen ninety-five.
So moved.
Second, it's been moved improperly second, Mr. Stokes?
Thirty years, Mr. President, and it seemed like yesterday, and the minister is here, and I asked him to come forward and speak to us about the item we're gonna vote on today, thirty years.
I wasn't even born yet.
Council President, City Council, His Honorable Mayor Horn, staff, everyone, um, thank you. First of all, Councilman Stokes, uh, before we get into that, I will feel remiss if I didn't come forth and ask Councilman Foot for the monies that we need for the trucks over at Parks and Rec, but, uh, it felt like old times, just wanted to go.
Just for old times, memory lane.
Yes. Just for a little levity, but thank you, uh, Councilman Stokes for bringing this forward. Uh, thirty years ago, uh, the Honorable Minister Louis Farakhan and so forth, uh, to call for a million men uh, to come to Washington DC to, for two reasons, to exercise the process of atonement, uh, to God first and to our families and to our communities, and reconciliations that we may come back and make our communities a safe and decent place to live. Thirty years later, that mantra still stands, and we are even more committed in making sure that that takes place in terms of being in the highways and the byways as the master teachers taught us to do, going after those that sometimes society forgets, or either those that need a second chance. So this is just something that we are very appreciative of, thirty years later, that we're still standing strong, and I'm thankful to have some of my brothers with me, uh, here and doing that. I'd like to call for Brother David Mohammed, who you know, Councilman Stokes, who was the presiding minister at that time when that took place, uh, who passed over the torch to me, and, uh, we're just thankful to be standing here together for this resolution. So I thank you, Council, ahead of time, and we just wanted to come and give our firm commitment to everyone that we're still committed to making our communities a safe and decent place to live. We're here to serve, so anything that we may be able to do for Council, anything we could do for His Honor, uh, and all of the community, please let us know. Thank you.
Thank you, any more questions or comments, Mr. Parkinson?
Thank you so much, I'm just curious, given all the work you've done and all this history, do you remain hopeful? Do you have hope? Do you think things are getting better?
Um, I can honestly answer you, uh, with great honesty, that no, sir, I'm not hopeful. I am assured that things will be better, uh, because there's a small book that I read called The Scriptures that gives a forecast that things will be better. But I understand.
Yeah.
That prayer is one thing, we must be able to put feet on prayer in order to make things be the reality of what they want. So although I understand the question, and I would have to answer in earnest, yes, sir, uh, that remains hope, but I am assured that there will be a difference because we are committed to make a difference. I still believe that this body before me is committed to making a difference, and we together can make the difference if that's what we want. So yes, sir, we can, so that I can count on your support to help us make a difference, that's what I need to hear.
Good deal, any more questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Seven, zero, thank you. Brother David, it's good seeing you again, I, we worked together a few decades ago. Good to see you, thank you, gentlemen.
You should have a copy of it, they brought you a copy.
Yes, ma'am, yes, sir, I did.
All right.
And I will make sure that, uh, this gets in the hand of the Honorable Louis Farakhan directly. Thank you, Council, y'all be blessed.
Item thirty-eight.
A resolution affirming support for the efforts of E-Merchant Capital LLC to establish and develop the metro center area by improving infrastructure and developing residential, commercial, and community service projects.
So moved. Second, it's been moved improperly second, Councilman Hartley.
Yes, uh, I'd like to, the, uh, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mark. This is a project, look, uh, we've been wrestling with this metro center for a while. Uh, you know, we've had several deals come and go and so forth. Now, checking out this emergent capital, uh, there's, there's several things that I look for. One is, uh, you know, the, uh, its integrity. And from what I've seen, I haven't, I've, I've seen nothing but integrity and a willingness to work. I've also seen them come to our communities. Uh, I can tell you that the communities, uh, neighborhood leaders, et cetera, they're a tough crowd, but they are in support of getting something done at that metro center, and they are in support of this project. Now, what's gonna happen is gonna take a lot of work moving forward. Uh, I don't see, Mr. Jones, are you going to join us as well? Okay, Mark, okay, okay, so, um, but again, this has the potential to drastically change West Jackson. Okay, and, you know, we're, we're always looking for hope, always looking for hope, prayer and hard work. This could be that thing that turns around a lot of, a lot of business along Highway eighteen, along Highway eighty, in West Jackson period. So without further ado, I'd like for them to just give a brief summary.
Sure, thank you, um, I'm Mark Day, I'm joined by Lisa Dean, Tiana Thomas, and Chris Warringly, additional members of the team here in Jackson, uh, Mr. President, Mr. Mayor, and of course, Mr. Hartley, and respective members of the remainder of the council and the city of Jackson, we're grateful for your support and the resilience of the Jackson community. Uh, team members of E-Merchant Capital have recently attended, as Mr. Hartley mentioned, uh, several of the community impact meetings, and were always impressed by the community's involvement, commitment, and we're certainly committed to continued full transparency with the community and with the leadership. This is a truly amazing occasion that we delivered this resolution on the State of the City address day with, uh, with the mayor, and we can't thank City Attorney Martin enough for his hard work and support throughout this process. And E-Merchant Capital Group is excited to begin the work here in the great city of Jackson and look forward to successfully implementing this project with your continued support and our continued hard work. Thank you.
All right, thank you, colleagues, any more questions or comments?
Mr. President?
Mr. Stokes?
I wanna thank Councilman Hartley for not giving up. So many times people see our area, uh, go down some, and they just say it's gone forever. But an area all over this country can be reborn and restarted. And that's what we slowly see a hope for the metro center. The location's perfect, you right there at the inner states, uh, the highway traffic, and, you know, it's the right place. I assure you, and working with this mayor, working with this councilman, you can make this a reality. He developed stores when they were closing stores in this city, so he understands development like some of us might not. But you can crunch numbers, y'all can show things, and people can see a new metro center being born, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hartley?
Yeah, just one thing I wanted to add, can you describe some of the things that you intend on doing long-term with that site?
Well, even today, we had opportunity to meet with the group that's going to help facilitate the infrastructure rehab of the property going in, obviously, it's been there for many decades. Everything needs to be updated, revamped, brought up to code, brought up to the times, brought up with technology, and in doing that, some of the first steps have been discussed, uh, in depth, obviously, with you, Mr. Hartley, but with the command center, the opportunity to look at one of the most important things in that area is addressing the crime, because if the crime in the area is addressed, development and money can follow. So as that is undertaken, along with the package, of course, that you guys were provided, the entire council and, and the mayor, to allow you to see what the long-term process is with mixed-use development, residential, and how that will trickle out to the other wards and other communities in the area that will be a support system for that infrastructure that's brought to play, uh, in all of this new development.
Okay, and, and in addition, you mentioned the development, uh, mixed-use, uh, approximately how many apartments are we talking?
Oh goodness, I don't have the package in front of me, I.
Okay.
But, uh.
It's, it's gonna be over six, seven hundreds?
About three hundred and fifty apartments.
Apartments, okay, and other, uh, uh, features, you gonna have a grocery store?
Well, right now, the idea and our goal is to utilize one of the anchor buildings there, which was the Belk, Belk's building. Sears building, I apologize, the Sears building, and, uh, giving an incentive to one of the big box grocery store chains to come in and, uh, and get a, a rent incentive for a couple of years on that, to allow that to be an anchor grocery store for that community, which of course then will draw people in for the other retail and mixed-use spaces that will be included on the site.
Okay, we have a lot of hard work ahead of us.
Absolutely, we're ready.
But I'd like to thank, uh, Mr. Mark Day, uh, Mr. Chris Jones, and, you know, he, family members and friends and, uh, co, um, and co-manager and pro, partners, uh, for their interest, and we're behind you. Okay, we're, we're, we are prayerful behind you.
We appreciate that, hope, I like the word hope.
Yes, we're going to, uh, and I think that's one of the, uh, uh, words we chose for, uh, the name of the project.
Yes.
Project Hope.
Absolutely, thank you so much, I appreciate all of you, thank you for your support.
Thank you, colleagues, any more questions or comments about item thirty-eight? Hearing none, all in favor? Seven, zero, thank you, colleagues, good job, Mr. Hartley. All right, colleagues, we're gonna move to discussions. Um, item thirty-nine, discussion item, Mr. Foot?
Thank you, Mr. President, I've talked with the city attorney, and in my two discussion items, um, would be better served in, in executive session.
Tonight?
Tonight, yeah.
Tonight?
Yeah, if we can do that executive session tonight, but I, that's, anyway, if you wanna go ahead and do the other ones, we can.
You, you may not have the votes to go into executive session. Tonight? Right. So you go hold or you gonna let it talk about?
I, I think they need to, they need to be best, it'd be best served for them to be discussed in executive session.
So you go hold them, or?
If you won't, if you, if we don't have big votes for executive session, obviously, I'd like to hold them till the next.
No, I'm just one vote, I don't know, you know.
Okay.
So what you go do, you go hold it, or?
Well, if we can't go into executive session, I wanna hold them.
Is that a yes?
I don't know how many votes there are.
You want a straw poll?
Sure.
All right, are we going to take executive session, all in favor of going into executive session, this is just a straw poll? One more pass, Mr. Hartley, the gavel, let him finish. All right, so we'll just wait, uh, hold your items for executive session. Uh, Mr. Stokes, forty-one?
I'm gonna hold my item, Mr. President, in the long meeting.
God bless you, uh, item, let's see, Clay, forty-three.
Item forty-three, we're not gonna hold because we have guests tonight. The mayor has already talked about the existing audit, a new financial, um, officer has already talked about where we are on the audit, and hopefully, November, um, first week, we will have an audit and will be completed. But at this time, we have guests that we met in Philadelphia that are gonna talk to us a little bit about what their service can offer. This is not a commitment to have them do an audit, this is to let us know that we can do two audits at one time, and hopefully, we can get both audits done within one year, and how they operate.
Hello, please state your name for the record.
Good evening, my name's Stephanie Palmer Tree, I'm a CPA, uh, Chartered Global Management Accountant, and a Certified Fraud Examiner. Um, we, uh, myself, Jason Ashley, and Michael Torres are from the CPA firm of Novum Advisory. We are a, uh, new CPA firm in the past two years, but that doesn't mean we're new to the auditing game. Uh, we have, um, collectively in our firm, over, I think, seventy-five years of governmental experience and audit, and we would like to come, uh, before you tonight, uh, mayor and council, to let you know that we would love to propose to, uh, complete the twenty-four and twenty-five audits of the city of Jackson. My understanding is that you, uh, have a commitment, uh, Mayor Horn mentioned, to get your twenty-three out this fiscal, or excuse me, this calendar year, and we would like to, we have some, uh, information sheets to give you about our experience, our audit timeline, our audit plan, and to let you know that we are ready and willing to propose, uh, should you seek a new auditor, and would, uh, welcome any questions about our audit process or any of that information so that we can, uh, answer these questions for you and give you some comfort in knowing what our services are and what our experience is.
Okay, thank you, and you can actually hand those to the clerk, those items to the clerk, Ms. Clay?
Okay, um, the one thing that I do want you to tell us about is at Philadelphia, you guys talked about governmental audits and your specialty and what you've done in the past, and in terms of experience, at least tell us that much, so we'll know what we're looking at and, um, how government audits work.
Yes, so, um, all four of the main partners in our firm, uh, are former employees of the Mississippi Office of the State Auditor. I myself was the former Deputy State Auditor for the State of Mississippi. Uh, I worked there for, um, over ten years in the, um, Financial and Compliance Division for the State, uh, Auditor of Mississippi, and during that time, completed many audits, signed the actual, um, act first for the State of Mississippi for multiple years. We actually, um, have performed county audits, city audits, uh, audits of school districts, and of other, many other governmental entities. I was also the Chief Financial Officer of the Mississippi Museum of Art for, uh, five years before I went to the State Auditor's office, and I have extensive experience on federal audits, as I also worked at a CPA firm and audited the Social Security Administration for the federal government. So we have a lot of audit experience, that's just mine, collectively, we all have that experience. We are very familiar with, um, auditing and producing audit reports, whether those be ACFers, annual reports, single audit reports, or the inter, internal control reports that are required as well for governmental auditing standards.
My last question, do you guys close or no longer work on audits during the months of January through April because you do taxes?
No, ma'am. We are, our CPA firm is a governmental CPA firm. We are one of the only, if not only CPA firms in Mississippi that focus primarily on governmental audits. We are not a, we do some tax returns, but we have, three of our four audit partners are that audit partners. We do not do tax returns, and we focus on getting the audits out. And our goal, the reason we left the State Auditor's office is because we realized the need in the state of Mississippi for capable, competent governmental auditors. There's not enough to get audits done timely. And we want to help cities, local governments, counties, everyone get caught up on their audits so that the state of Mississippi can get federal monies and can have more fiscal responsibility.
Thank you.
All right, colleagues, any more questions?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to take a second to thank the, the budget chairman for going that extra mile to make sure we can get audit done. And some that council members really, 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 really need to know is that the fund balance is held up because of this audit. That's money over the years that was spent in the previous year that most mavs allowed the council members to kind of, you know, help do things. You see things in your ward that need to be done. So we need the audit done. And what they're saying, they ready to do two, because we have a contract, we've got somebody doing the current audit, Madam Chairman, but we got two more years that we could go try to get done, so we can get back on track. We used to be, we were on track. City of Jackson was always on time getting audits done, and we need to get back to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parkinson.
Thank you. I have a question for both you and you, if you wouldn't mind answering it. Certainly not a guarantee, but is it a potentially reasonable goal to complete a 2024 audit and a 2025 audit by September thirtieth?
Yes, it is a completely reasonable goal to complete both audits. One of the things that we would highlight to you and that we did highlight to you in our, in our documentation is that these audits, a lot of these audit processes can be done concurrently. So we could work on the twenty-four audit and the twenty-five audit at the same time and try to get the, the ball rolling. We don't want to have to wait for the twenty-four to start the twenty-five. We can do testing concurrently. We can gain understandings concurrently. We can do all of these things. The only contingency on any of the plans that we make is, of course, receiving the information timely. But I was very encouraged tonight when I heard your, your new CFO talk about the streamlining the process, encouraging the reports getting done on time. All of that information just assists in getting the audit done timely. But yes, especially if it is a priority of the CPA firm to do such, it is entirely possible.
And Ms. Caldwell, would you, that be your professional opinion as well?
Absolutely. As far as timely, we, we did have some downtime in the past few years because we were waiting on the auditors to, you know, do testing and to just get back with us on certain things. And so we did use that time to kind of prepare for the twenty-four and get things rolling on that. So I definitely concur with her. We can, you know, have things running concurrently so that we can get it done quickly.
Where's the firm located?
We are currently located in Madison, Mississippi.
Oh.
But we do have a proud, we do have a proud member of Ward Seven as one of our partners.
Are you from Jackson?
I'm not from Jackson.
Okay, I was going to ask where you went to high school.
I'm from Jackson.
Where'd you go to high school?
Well, I moved to Clinton when I was six, but you can blame my parents for that. I didn't, I didn't have any, I didn't have a say in that. But I'm a, I'm a proud member of Timberlawn Elementary. Now, that's where I went to elementary school.
Thank you. Ms. Clay, is that all for you, for your discussion?
Mr. President, to my man. I, I've heard of this firm, and I've heard really, really good things about this firm, especially the issue of having the expertise that governments need to get audits done quickly and efficiently. I also would like to ask a question. Have you heard about our audit woes? And the issue that has been represented to me is that the issues of Jackson Waters finances and audits. They're on a cash basis, we're on an accrual basis. We're on a federal fiscal year, they're on a calendar fiscal year. Do you see any problems going forward in reconciling those two entities' audits?
No, sir. The auditing standards and the governmental accounting standards are clear that you do not have to have the same basis of accounting, which would be cash and modified accrual, nor do you have to have the same fiscal year to be able to include a component unit, which at this time is what I would probably classify Jackson Water. There are ways to, to make that work in the existing audit report. Sometimes they are just caveats in the actual audit report that it is a different basis. Sometimes it's annualizing information, but there are many ways that you can achieve that. Also, one of the things that I would like to point out is currently for the 2023 fiscal year, I believe you are completing an act for, which is the annual comprehensive financial report. The act for, while it is the preferred method of producing an annual report, is not a required method of producing an annual report for a city. It is, the GFOA, Governmental Financial Officers Association, does believe that it is the most transparent source of information, but that's because it has a lot of schedules that auditors and accountants use in the, in the back of the report. Now, you can produce an annual report that is not an act for, and you do not have the requirement that you include all component units in that report. So if timeliness were the biggest issue, you could produce a report without one of your component units, which means you could produce a report without Jackson Water and produce a timelier report.
Could you add Jackson Waters audit as an addendum to your audit, to the city's audit?
You could, and typically, what you would also do is state in your audit, we would state in our audit opinion, that that report was not issued as part of the city of Jackson's audit, and that it was issued under separate cover and could be located at this web address or at the city hall's office, any of that information. That would also be an appropriate action to take. If you are trying to get the GFOA certificate, which would require an act for, then you cannot not include your component units. You have to include them in order to get that certificate. But I would like to let you know that it, it is not possible for you to get the certificate for 2023 right now anyway, because it would have had to have been turned in by September the thirtieth, 2025, in order to get that GFOA certificate.
Thank you.
And I'll just say, I want to thank Councilwoman Clay for bringing you before this body.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
All right, and Ms. Clay says she's going to hold the litter discussion. Item forty-five, review and continuation of a COVID-19 local emergency. Can you just show me by, show of hands? All right, you got it. All right, very good. All right, item forty-eight. What happened?
Monthly financial reports as required according to Section twenty-one dash thirty-five dash thirty thirteen of the Mississippi Code annotated of nineteen seventy-two.
All right, again, show of hands, you received your monthly report? All right, all right, very good. All right, colleagues. Are we going into executive session?
Mr. President, I move we go into closed session for the purpose of going to executive session.
Okay, that dies for a lack of a second. Let's go into announcements, please. Yes, sir, Mr. Stokes?
Thank you, Mr. President. Could we close the meeting on a Mrs. Deborah Glattney Parker? She's the mother of Miss Amber Parker, who worked in Ward Two, was Ward Two assistant. Mr. Courtney C. Page, who ran for different offices through his lifetime, Reverend James Graves Senior, Pastor Danny Johnson Junior, I'm sorry, Danny Johnson Senior, Mrs. Archibald Loretta Young, and Mrs. Josephine Webster. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone, Mr. Parkinson?
Thank you. Quick announcement that this is actually National Dyslexia Month, and we have a member of the chamber who actually is a member of the dyslexic community. And if the council will allow me just a brief moment to allow him to come up and speak about his experience.
Come on up.
Will you please state your name for the record?
Leland Parkinson.
Thank you, Mr. Parkinson. And you were recently diagnosed with dyslexia. Can you tell the folks what does that mean?
It's like you read letters backwards. It is harder to read.
It can be hard to read, yes. So what do you think that people should know about dyslexia? Well, you got tested for dyslexia. What was it like? Was it scary when you had to go get tested for dyslexia, or was it a little fun?
Kind of.
It was kind of? It was kind of scary or kind of fun, or both?
Kind of, it was scary.
Okay, so it can be frustrating to read sometimes,